Okay, we'll call the September second, two thousand twenty-five North Providence Town Council meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action vote in regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of August sixth and August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, zone change amendment, town council to consider approval of an application from Connolly Law and Associates to amend Article five, section four, zero, nine, E of the zoning ordinance of the town of North Providence, this application. Okay, this application was advertised in the Providence Journal on July eleventh, eighteenth, and two thousand twenty-five, and twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, for a hearing on this date. This item was continued from the August sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Do you have a motion to continue this to the October council meeting? Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock, all those in favor.
Mr. President, if I may, I'm gonna recuse on this matter.
All those in favor. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Please know Councilman Martone is recusing on that one. Item number fourteen, Stephen Only House, James Loffler, chairperson of the Historic District Commission would like to address the council concerning the Stephen Only House on Smithfield Road, just state your name for the record, please.
James Loffler.
Thank you.
Took it, well, it's going to put it in my speech. Council members, hello, my name is James Loffler and I am currently the chairperson of the Historic District Commission. I'm here to talk about the Captain Stephen Only House, a historic property located on Smithfield Road. This property is part of the original family farm that was later donated to the town to create Stephen Only Park. It is situated within the town, uh, within the park's footprint and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Since two thousand twenty-two, the house has had multiple owners and received multiple purchase offers. Work has been conducted outside the scope of work permits and without review by the Historic District Commission, with the actual work being done at night and on weekends, possibly to avoid detection by town employees. There are multiple fines and liens issued to by the town for failing to clean board windows and cut grass, which the property owners did not do. Recently, several persons have made offers to purchase the property with plans to do quick flips, uh, make it a flop house and partition into a multifamily residence. These options, although legal according to zoning regulations, are not suitable for a historic house of its current age, two hundred and twenty-three years old. This house also sits on a traditional stone foundation that more than likely could not withstand the use of multiple people living there. I say all this to urge the council to examine the possibility of taking this house, uh, possibly by eminent domain or purchase, in an effort to preserve it for future generations. The property is already within the park's footprint and town personnel have been maintaining the grounds. I think there are some other people who want to say some stuff, and that's it for me, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Loffler? Whoever wants to come up, just state your name for the record, please.
I'm Marie Trupa, I'm also with Historic District Commission. I've been on the commission since two thousand twenty-three. And fifteen problems have come across the commission concerning the Stephen Only House. I'm not gonna read all of them, but I think you should be aware of what has been taking place there. Repeated resale of property and transfers of ownership. The, uh, failure of the owners and prospective owners to show up for housing court. Replacement of windows in two-by-two design when the rest of the house had a one-by-one design. Replacement of windows with vinyl when wood was required. Fire damage in the building which had been covered by sheet rock. Lack of attention to the chimneys and caps which are in need of repair. Replacement with steel doors when wood was required. Replacement of the front door lock and doorknob with a modern set and the vintage set found thrown in the dirt. Pest damage inside the house. Windows and doors left open during the winter months in January, in early February of two thousand twenty-two, and again in the winter of two thousand twenty-four. Members of the commission have gone into the house to find shabby work done on the inside, which will probably have to be replaced. So I urge the council to consider purchasing this house, purchasing this house to save it. It has tremendous historical significance, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, did you just sign over there the paper? We don't have a sign, just sign your name that you spoke on the side.
Do you want, uh, Jim to sign also?
Councilman Bacala has a question.
Who owns this property right now?
Currently, out for sale.
Who owns it, but who's putting up, who?
Ron is also a member of our commission.
I'm losing my voice, which is extremely ironic. Lowanis LLC is the name of the company.
All right, and we even know what they're asking for that property right now.
They're asking three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, not to put you on the spot, Ronnie, dude, how many acres, what's that coming with as far as the house?
It's thirty thousand square feet, so a little over.
Would anyone else like to speak from the District Commission?
I'd like to speak as a citizen of North Providence, uh, who's.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Vincent Cherico, District Two. Thank you. Oh, with an interest in the preservation of the house. Um, first, I don't need to remind the council, um, that once a historic property is lost, it's lost forever. And we, this is a golden opportunity to preserve an historically important, both locally and nationally, uh, property. I also would like to see what the future holds for that house. Is it, it's also part of the park, it also could be a showplace, it could also be a place for a future historical society for North Providence. It could be a place of education, uh, to the community, it could be a place of recreation for the community as well. And with an overseer program where you have a resident overseer, it also could provide some income for its own maintenance. I was a resident overseer with the Eleazar Arnold House in Lincoln, Rhode Island, with what was then the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities. It's now called Historic New England, you know, the Clements Iron House and the Eleazar House are, you know, in joining towns Johnson and Lincoln. So those are successful programs that can add revenue to its own upkeep. But, uh, citizen, want it done, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Pollock?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can you come back up for one second? I'm sorry, Hector, one, one minute. Maybe you don't know this answer, maybe you do, if the town was able to purchase this property and preserve this property, would there be substantial grants out there considering it's a historic, uh, property that, you know, might be a replacement? I'm sorry, May, you might even know that answer.
I, I'm not an, I'm not an expert on the grant proposal issue, but I do know that Rhode Island Historic Preservation does have grants. This is a national register property, so I'm sure there's something out there from the, from the Park Service. It just needs the right person to go digging for it, that's not me. But that's, that's the answer to that.
I apologize, May, I probably should have.
Do you need me for anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for your time, so, if I may. We were gonna place this on the agenda and I found out that the Historic District Commission would be here for the sole purpose to ask, uh, this council to consider, uh, purchasing the property. We've been discussing this with the Realtor, um, and as was just stated, the asking price was three hundred eighty-nine thousand. We, we have, um, the option to purchase that property for three hundred sixty-five thousand after the last discussion I, that I've had, um, with the Realtor. As been stated, um, I will tell you, I think we're a little late in purchasing this probably, property. We probably should have owned it prior to tonight and prior to all of the, um, things that have happened there. Uh, so, uh, just to, just give you a little, little history, I did a little study myself. Uh, this fellow was born in North Providence two hundred seventy years ago, Stephen Only. He's a descendant of Thomas Only, one of Rhode Island's founders. And in the Battle of Princeton, seventeen seventy-seven, he saved the life of our future president, James Monroe. When he decided to settle down, he chose to return to North Providence. He represented North Providence in the General Assembly, and by the way, um, being that he was a, uh, a former neighbor of our council president, he served as the North Providence Town Council President. And as the Providence Journal recalled upon his death, he was in the best and highest sense of the words, a patriot and devotedly attached to our national institutions and interests for which in his younger days, he had so often been ready to make sacrifice of his life. Um, I did talk to, uh, met with our finance director and, um, asked her about the finances to purchase the property, because I thought that would be a question tonight. And she had stated that we should just purchase the property through, uh, our operating budget and if we have a deficit this year, we could then take the money from the surplus. But at this point in time, we have it, and again, um, I think smart business tells you that, uh, being that we own a property all around us, that you purchase the property that the budget odds just for protection. And as I stated, I think, uh, assets at this point in time be a major mistake. And I think it, uh, as the gentleman stated, um, I know we can get some monies for the, uh, uh, preservation and then could be part of our school system in, in the history of our town, so. Decision, I would think is up to you at this point in time, but again, these people represent the, the district commission that work so hard in preserving all of the properties. But in the past, this at this point in time, I would think would be a major, major mistake on our part.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
No, no, sir, I know Hector wanted to speak.
I'll just state for the record that I, myself, uh, am in favor of purchasing this property. Um, I've lived in the town, I'm forty-three years old. I've lived across from that, I grew up in the house across the street from that house. So, um, I've seen the bad side of it, the good side of it, when I was a young kid. And the last couple of years, it's fallen upon tough times and, uh, you know, my parents still live in that house, so, you know, if my mother wasn't babysitting her grandchildren, she'd probably be here tonight. She, uh, you know, my parents, I cared deeply about that property, they were always asking what's going on. So they live in that cul-de-sac, all the neighbors, same thing. So I do think this is a great opportunity for the town and, uh, I thank you all for your interest in this and bringing it to our attention.
So if, if I could just piggyback one thing, I'm one of six Bacalas who grew up on that field and like your uncles up the street, we all used it, so to see that kind of deteriorate, I'd love to see it just stay the way it is. So I, I'm in favor of that too now.
My name is Hector Betancourt. I hear a little bit about the house, actually, I went and looked for the house, you know, to, uh, see if my daughter willing to buy it, so I can fix it. I'm on a general contract. General contract. And when I inspect the house and need a lot of work, it's a house that is good for Mr. Cianci. Oh, sorry, the mayor Lombardi, who is very good in business. Um, I will say it's about ninety thousand dollar or a hundred thousand dollar to fix it up. Number one, they put the wrong windows in an old house. Uh, and it's nothing there. It's not even remember, nothing to remember the hero or whatever it is in North Providence. All it's gonna do is create expenses for the taxpayers on North Providence and draw the federal money to rebuild the house.
So are you for purchasing or not purchasing it?
I'm not to purchase that.
You don't want to purchase it?
I even suggested to my daughter, don't buy it, even if it's near the park. It's not worth it. All it's gonna do is create more expenses. The mayor probably gonna have some Italian family members and they are working, waiting to somebody can come in and see what. It was nothing to remember the man. I apply ayes to you guys, but.
Thank, thank you.
We pay. Pay it on morning, just not to play anymore games. No under my watch, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Ma'am?
Victoria Vey.
Thank you.
I am actually not a citizen of North Providence, but I am a citizen of Providence, Rhode Island and America. And I came to see the Stephen Only House because Stephen Only is such a significant figure in history. And I found a beautiful park, I found an extraordinary historic cemetery, and I had dinner at Jackie's. So historic tourism can, um, encourage business as well. Um, but setting the, the practical considerations aside, uh, this is an incredible piece of Americana. I've lived in five different states and one thing that distinguishes Rhode Island so extraordinarily is its historic resources. So I urge you to consider the irreplaceability of this property as a piece of American history and to do whatever you can to preserve it, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Sir?
Joe Trugie, District Two, um, we are, um, my wife and I, Rosemary, are residents supporting the proposal as well. Based on this historical significance, everything that was mentioned prior and also the location, location fabulous within everything around it, that's part of the town as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
Hello, uh, my name is James Reynolds, I'm in District Two as well, I just, I don't want to take much of your time, I just want to reiterate what has been said and I also want to put a finer point on the fact that there's a historic cemetery on the site as well. And from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like currently the house is a liability to the town, there's a lot of trouble, there's a lot of damage to it. And it's sort of turning a liability into an asset by purchasing this property and I'm sure the research can be done, I'm sure there are grants out there for the preservation of this property that can be tapped, for sure, for sure. But it's an opportunity that shouldn't be missed and once lost, again, as everybody said, it's lost forever. He's an incredibly important person in our history and he's a North Providence resident like the rest of us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue this matter to either a special meeting before next month's meeting or the, um, October meeting, but if we can get on, in here beforehand, you know, we'll have the mayor, uh, just put it on the agenda for purchase.
I'll look at the council, we'll try to move it along as quick as possible.
I'll make a motion for this, for a special meeting.
Okay. Okay, a motion's been made to schedule a special meeting for the purchase of this property by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporte, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Item number five, victualling license, town council to consider the approval of a victualling license for Cumberland Farms Incorporated, DBA Cumberland Farms, number thirteen oh six, eighteen seventy-four, Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. I don't know about this guy, I think you gotta go easy on him.
Yeah, no, but unfortunately I have to recuse, like to go out of my coffee spot.
For the record, uh, Councilman Laporte will be recusing, just state your name for the record, please, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the council, Joe Baxter, I'm here representing, uh, Cumberland Farms Incorporated. Um, Mr. President, I know this item and the next item are very similar, they're both licensing matters, uh, for the same, uh, entity. So I don't know if you want me to take them in turn or.
Let me just read number six into the record.
Sure.
Item number six, holiday sales license, town council to consider the approval of a holiday sales license for Cumberland Farms Incorporated, DBA Cumberland Farms, number thirteen oh six, eighteen seventy-four, Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, so before you now are two licensing, uh, matters, um, arising from the sale of the Neon Gas Station on Minto Spring Avenue to Cumberland Farms. Uh, all the licenses that were transferable, uh, at the, uh, prior to today were transferred. Uh, so these are the only licenses that were not transferable, uh, so that brings them, uh, before you tonight. Uh, one thing I do want to clarify, I believe on the holiday license, uh, form, there was a, a small error. It was, uh, noted that the hours would be six AM to eleven AM, uh, when in fact it's, uh, six AM to eleven PM, um, as is on all the other licenses, uh, and just to note, those are the, the current hours, um, that the Neon Gas Station was operating under, um, uh, as you, uh, the council granted them. Um, so no big difference really there except the signage, um, uh, at that location. So, uh, unless there are any questions, um, just ask the council to, uh, vote favorably on, uh, these two licenses.
Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the victualling license?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it, and do you have a motion to approve the holiday sales license?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor? Aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck. Item number seven, victualling license, town council to consider the approval of a victualling license for Comines LLC, DBA Crazy Wings and Things, two, 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 zero, Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Is there anyone here from Crazy Wings, just state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, council. My name's, uh, David Thomas.
Thank you.
Representing Comines LLC.
Signing.
Yes.
We don't have our, uh, sheriff tonight. All right, um, Mr. Thomas has a very successful business here in town, does a good job. Anybody have any questions on the victualling for the new business?
What are your hours gonna be?
I'm sorry, sir?
What are your hours gonna be?
Uh, eleven AM to eleven PM and then Friday and Saturday to twelve AM.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman, uh, Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, council.
All right. Item number eight, peddler vendor license, town council to consider a vote for the approval of a peddler vendor license for a mobile food truck for Cider and Spice Incorporated, DBA Cider and Spice, fifty-three Colwell Road, Greenville, Rhode Island. Is anyone here from Cider and Spice? Is there anyone here from Cider and Spice? Okay, I'll have a motion to remove this from the agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number nine, class F-one liquor license, town council to consider a vote for the approval of a class F-one liquor license for at-your-service bartending for an event at Camp Meon on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve the class F-one license?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Laporte, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Pollock, any questions? Maybe none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number ten, class F-one liquor license, town council to consider a vote for the approval of a class F-one liquor license for Easy Bar LLC for an event at Camp Meon on October tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve the class F-one license?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Eden Rettual, JL and Bowery Investments LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge, representative of Dana's Lounge to appear for a check on the opening of the business after flood and meeting of the requirements on the liquor license. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. President, John Manny on behalf of the license holder, uh, good evening, members of the council. So the status of this matter is we're moving along, uh, pretty well. Unfortunately, I think we need a little bit more time. The interior of the building has been, uh, worked on, there's some flooring, some painting and some minor things to be done along with reordering an inventory. As far as the, uh, division of taxation, payment was made of all, uh, sales and beverage tax today. As far as the division of taxation, payment was made of all sales and beverage tax today. In addition to that, employee taxes were paid and are up to date. There was one other item. I believe it was a food health management. We have someone, the, one of the managers of the facility. And we paid the fee. They took the cost and everything. So that fee's been paid. I don't think it's in the system yet. But all of that was recently done. So I'm going to respectfully request if we could put on the October meeting, hearing for that date, and we expect everything to be completed by then. It's taken a little bit of time, but I think we made significant progress.
Councilman Pollock?
Counselor, how are you?
Good. How are you, sir?
JL Dean has been in constant contact with me and I spoke to him recently.
Okay.
And we had talked about maybe moving this to the November agenda. And I'm gonna make a motion in a moment, but. Well, what I'd like to do, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to actually move this to the November agenda. However, if he meets all necessary requirements before that date, you can meet with the town clerk and allow him to open once he meets all necessary requirements if it's prior to that.
I did. Yeah, I just had a conversation with him and I, I understand he was originally believing it was November to that it'd be completed. But we're hoping it'd be in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So if it's possible to keep it on, sir, we appreciate that.
And that's fine. He, you know, like I said, I had spoke to him.
Right.
And he had expressed, you know, instead of having to come back in October and then come back in November. But yeah, I have no problem with that. So I'd like, I'd like to amend that motion and if he thinks he can get open by October.
Okay, a motion's been made to consider this matter to the October meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Laporte. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Item number thirteen, parking issues. Anthony Costanzo.
Good evening.
Item number thirteen, Anthony Costanzo.
Anthony Costanzo.
Owner of a Costanzo Holding would like to discuss a financial agreement with the town of North Providence for use of his parking lots by town taxpayers, vendors or others with town business. Just state your name for the record, please.
Anthony Costanzo.
Thank you.
So back in twenty sixteen, had an agreement with the town. Maybe not exactly the way it should have been, but nevertheless, there was an agreement in place to utilize the parking on the side of the building, which has been continuously used even up to like the last few days. It is an issue with insurance. For my insurance company, it's an issue of trying to work out a deal and I'm trying to open up a conversation about that. I don't expect any decision tonight on this, but I have a document I can get to Mary Ann later and maybe make a copy so all of you can read what was agreed to in the past. Just want to try to put something together. I don't want to have any legal responsibility for anybody parking out there, tripping out there, falling out there. I don't want to just let people use my property for free either. So I'm open to discussion now or we can have a discussion later.
You said that there was an agreement in the past?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a, you're gonna give Mary Ann a copy of that?
Yeah, I can make a copy or she could take it and make copies for all of you also.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Anthony, when you say you wanted to open up dialogue, what do you mean? What do you?
I'd like to just have a dialogue as to what is a possibility for compensation, taking care of the insurance, having a document stating that there is insurance to town. Like as, for example, Stephen, you've asked us to cover ourselves and the town for the event.
Right.
I want to be, I want to know that the town is covering themselves when people park in my lot, which is right next door. And I can almost bet you someone's parked in the lot right now. So I'm not asking for the world, but I would like some compensation for that and just really don't want, at my stage in my life, I don't want to deal with the aggravation of an insurance claim.
When you were saying dialogue back and forth, what do you have in your mind as a, as a starting point or a salute? What are you thinking?
Amount of money? Is that what you're asking?
Money, insurance.
Well, this document.
A line, a fence saying, don't park here. I'm, I'm asking you what, what you're thinking.
Here, to be quite honest with you, I don't know if the town generated the document or if my attorney generated the document, but someone generated a very good document. The only thing that would have to change probably is financially bring it up to, you know, it's, it's ten years old at least, you know, so.
Does that have a financial?
Number on that one?
Yeah. Is there a financial number on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I haven't seen it. I'm just asking, so.
What, no, no one's seen this.
So with the rate of inflation and everything else, you're looking for another.
I'm, I'm not looking for the world.
You're looking to have it looked at again, like, you know, ten years later. No, I'm, I'm saying that you're trying to adjust it.
Yeah, exactly. That's all.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
What is the number on that agreement?
It's a small amount. It's actually like dollars per day. So it's four hundred dollars a month.
What in your mind would you create as a starting point in two thousand twenty-five?
Something between eight hundred and a thousand, I think, would be fine.
A day?
On today's numbers.
Let's refer this to the finance committee. I don't like to go or discuss contracts in an open forum.
No, it's no need to discuss it tonight. I just need to put it forward.
I appreciate that.
Something happened in the lot in the future. I just, I want to be on record saying I said I wanted to put something out. Okay?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to send this to the finance committee?
Knock on wood.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporte. Is there any other questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number fifteen, Pittman Street, Councilman Laporte requests discussion and possible vote on parking on Pittman Street. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's been an ongoing issue on Pittman Street. It's a very small street. It backs up to Doyle and it seems that the folks that live on Doyle have, they, they've, well, they park in back of their house on Pittman Street, which creates no easement to go back and forth on the street should the people on Pittman Street park on either side of the street. So it's parking on both sides. It becomes a little bit of a, a public safety hazard inasmuch as there is a woman that lives down the end of the street who is handicapped. And if an emergency vehicle come for her or anybody on the matter for that, on that street, it may cause a, a, a problem there. We have one of the, the residents, Mr. Peasy's here with us. He's provided us with some photographs that you can all see. There are cones on one side of the street so that at least the residents that live on that street can park there. So if Mr. Peasy, if you'd like to come up and elaborate on that, we'd appreciate it. And by, may I add also that there have been signs on the corner of the street that it's a dead end. And one of the two signs has been taken down. Correct?
Yes, Paul Peasy, fifty-nine Pittman Street. We would, my neighbor Anne Marie Unguire from fifty-five Pittman was here, I believe about a year and a half, two years ago. About the parking situation. At the time, it wasn't as bad as it is now. It's, it's out of control. I don't know where these cars are even coming from. They are lined up from the top of Fruit Hill in Pittman, past my house, past Anne Marie's house. On one side, we have to put cones out on Tuesday night to ensure our trash is picked up on, on Wednesday morning or Wednesday during the day. We want to have company over. We have to put cones out. There's, there's no room at all to maneuver. There's one, one day I couldn't even get down the street. I had to park on Westview. There's the, the car, there was a car in front of Andy Baldino's house, resident six thirty-eight Fruit Hill. And there was another car on the, the, I guess would be the north, north side of Pittman. And it was so far away from the curb, I couldn't get down the street. So I don't know how we're gonna resolve this. I hate like hell to do resident parking only on Pittman because there are other driveways. Ten Doyle, their driveway is on Pittman. So for resident parking only, they have guests over. They're in violation because their address, physical address Doyle. Same thing with Baldino. He's at six thirty-eight. The other neighbor's at six fifty Fruit Hill. So I don't know how, how we can go about resolving this issue, but hopefully something will be done with the council or the ordinance committee.
Okay.
Do you got something to say? Go ahead now.
Would we have to create an ordinance? Maybe I should ask Mario for that, for them to have parking for the, the people of that street only on there? Being that the, the backside of Doyle a butt step street.
You have to, you have to go to ordinance to get.
Do we, I, I, do we, we, we put up no parking signs without going to ordinance, I think, don't we?
We have to have an ordinance for no parking.
Or no parking?
Resident only.
And for resident parking as well.
We have to have the ordinance for that.
But, but you're, you're asking if we were to contemplate resident only parking, can you limit it to the residents of Pittman? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes.
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
What happens to like the people on Doyle that have driveway access is Pittman, like if they have guests over, they're not Pittman residents though.
You will only be able to go in front of your house. Like you'll, you'll come for a permit and we will put your address on that permit. And then you put that permit in your window when you park the car, but it'll only be, each resident will be able to park in front of their.
So it sounds to me like you would need, you would need resident only on one side and no parking on the other. I mean, I don't, I don't, that, that street seems small, too small to begin with.
All right, you're not, I don't think you're understanding that, that go down Pittman, the house at the end, the bottom, the bottom pit on the right. Their address is ten Doyle. Their driveway is on Pittman. So I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, exclude them from being able to park on, you know.
Let's, uh.
Yeah, I think you gotta figure out.
All right. What we'll do is like, we have our lieutenant here. We'll have him go out, take a look, bring the suggestion back to the ordinance committee. We'll create an ordinance that best suits the residents of that street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you want to make a motion to send this matter to?
Yes, I make a motion that we send this to ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay.
And, and no, that we have, I'm sorry, lieutenant, survey it and, and see what he, what's for some data on it.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Pollock to send this to the ordinance committee and have lieutenant go out and take a look. Mayor? Okay. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
You know. Lieutenant, while he's speaking, if you want to look at this for, as a reference, these are from him.
Okay.
Board appointments.
Remind me to go back to, um, I'm, I'm gonna go eleven. All right. Just remind me to go back to them.
I got you.
Item number sixteen, board appointments, Town Council discussion in action for God to appointments to be made to the following boards. Reappointments, A, Tax Board of Review, Kenneth Cody, B, Juvenile Herring Board, Elizabeth Vishan. Do I have a motion to reappoint Kenneth Cody and Elizabeth Vishan?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. New appointment, tree warden Timothy Thorpe. Is Mr. Thorpe here? Can you just state your name for the record and sign in?
Yes, hi, Timothy Thorpe. I've been a resident of the town for twenty-five years. With me tonight is Fayette Amston, the former tree warden. And I'm a licensed arborist. I would be pleased to provide the service to the town. Any questions for me?
You all have his information in front of you. The appointment usually comes from the mayor's office. Mayor, do you have Mr. Thorpe called? Anybody have any questions?
Just make sure Mary, use Mary Ann's phone number.
Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Thorpe as the tree warden?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, Our Lady of Fatima Hospital, discussion and possible vote on the sale of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. Assuming that nothing new is taking place, I will make a motion to continue this to the October meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eighteen, claims submitted, Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following. Catherine, Catherine Borogod, Four Haven Street, Cumberland, Rhode Island, do I have a motion to send this matter to the claims committee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nineteen, tax addendas, Town Council discussion and action and vote with regard to the list of tax addendas received from the tax assessor in the amount of one million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and fifty-seven cents for real estate and one million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and eleven cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to send this to the finance committee?
This is an amendment that's coming into us. That's not an over thousand. This is because of Fatima.
Okay.
They have to. So these, this money is coming into us.
So am I doing?
Do I have a motion to grant?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Laporte, Councilman Martone? Yeah, I, I'm, I'm curious. Is this, does this mean we're getting, we've been told we're getting this money?
I know Angelina told me that they didn't include this before because they thought it was a sale, not, I guess the sale didn't go through.
Cool. I think we should, I think we should have the mayor explain what's going on.
Angelina told me that this is coming into us from Fatima Hospital. Basically, that's what she said.
All right, I'm gonna hold off taking a vote on this one. We'll go back to item number nineteen. Item number twenty, tax abatements under a thousand, Town Council discussion, action and vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand dollars received from the tax assessor in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents for real estate and two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents for tangibles.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Councilman Martone. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, tax abatements over a thousand, Town Council discussion and action and possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements over a thousand dollars received from the tax assessor in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents for motor vehicles. Do I have a motion?
To finance?
Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, Claims Committee Report, Town Council discussion in action for God to the ordinance, Claims Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Bacala. Councilman?
Uh, just make a motion to accept the report as submitted.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporte. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, Finance Committee Report, Town Council discussion in action for God to the Finance Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Martone. Councilman? Yes, we did have a Finance Committee meeting. We've had a couple. I just wanted to put on the record that all of the tax abatements have been approved by the, all the pending tax abatements have been approved by the Finance Committee. And we will submit a supplemental report as well. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martone. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, back to the beginning. Item number two. Oh, we already did two? Item number, okay, proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the Town Council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Three, Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero seven Z, An Ordinance Amending the Town of North Providence Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section Four, zero nine E. This item is in connection with the previous zone change item. Do I have a motion to continue this matter to the October meeting?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Pollock. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala?
For the record, Council President, I'll be recusing on this.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. For the record, Councilman Martone will recuse on item number three. Item number four, Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero nine, An Ordinance Amending Sections six dash one to six dash five of the Town Code of Ordinances Related to Business Regulation. Do I have a motion to pass Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero nine?
So the amendment, the amendment as it relates to the effective date, the president has asked that that amendment be made by a vote of the council.
Okay, do I have a vote? Is there a motion to take up an amendment on the effective date?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Laporteo. You wanna explain the amendment?
So, so the amendment would move the effective date for the registration of businesses located in the town of January first, twenty twenty-six. The provision of drafting of the ordinance, uh, stated for July or June, um.
It was man, they, yeah. Oh, they had two different dates and then.
So for purposes of the ability of businesses to comply with that date perspective.
Okay, is there any questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve, to pass the ordinance with the, the amendment?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number eleven, entertainment licenses. Town council to consider the approval of two entertainment licenses for S. Alex Jackson, DBA three sixty venue, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island, DJ and other types of entertainment. Uh, you all received the email on the Alex Jackson license, um. As a result of that email, I'm gonna ask this is, that this item be removed from the agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollock. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
The man.
Nineteen.
Did he leave the building?
That is coming in. I don't want, you know, I'm granting, it, it, Angelina, that is money coming in, not going.
Yeah, I, I, I have a question on that.
All right, Councilman Pollock, your question?
So since the mayor's not here, I'd like to make a motion to continue that to the special meeting, upcoming special meeting we're gonna have.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Pollock to continue this matter to the upcoming special meeting. Is there a second?
Hang on a second. Make, make a recommendation.
All right. He's gonna call now?
He's calling right now.
All right, we'll hold off recess for about five minutes.
Maybe. Maybe a quick answer.
Item nu- number nineteen to the special meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made sec- by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporteo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, motion been made, seconded. Needing adjourn.